I'm gonna be virtual tomorrow night because I have a.
Is tomorrow night definite or Sunday?
Yeah, tomorrow night we meet to if, I mean, if there's stuff to act on or if we want to make some, make changes or suggestions. But tomorrow, if, tomorrow will be the day we could say send it to the slot and make our big motion. Have them scheduled.
And then we don't do, then it's done, right?
Then we are done except for the Tuesday night where we come into a basic book, set the mill rate of buildings.
That's next Tuesday.
So that'll be the 21st, so it's quite a while, but.
Okay, I'm supposed to be in San Fran right now, but I didn't feel like going on holiday. And then I'm in Phoenix Sunday through Wednesday, and I'm in Boston, um, that starts up now. It's time. Seasons right during like my travel kicks.
So tomorrow's regular meeting where we would act on this tonight and or send it to the town. If there's something that like, if we do actually make a change, we'll probably meet the week after to, I mean, because what we can do is we could either make direct changes to these budgets, or we can make a top dollar change to this one. We don't actually have to just suggest it. We could just make it and then they figure it out. It's the greatest thing. But actually, that's what they do down in Norwich. I mean, the board of ed and whoever come out with a hundred million dollars and the town says we'll give you ninety two million.
Yeah.
And they just have to sort it out, you know?
Yeah, we're not that big, so it's pretty easy.
But usually, when I have been a part of that, which has not been lately, it's usually been, okay, it looks like we need to save two hundred grand and we're gonna do eighty percent this way and twenty percent, or whatever the ratio happens to be.
Yeah.
You know, whatever town versus CIP versus EEU and they're split that way, which, you know, is probably the fairest way unless there was a real difference between budgets that we can figure out. All right, let's get me logged in. I've been trying to get here early because I felt so rushed getting these TVs set up and everything. Because all this thing is unplugged and in the corner and TVs are watching Hell's Kitchen and they're like.
I got a work thing tomorrow, so it's like one of those, you know, friggin' officer meetings and everybody and they stuff us full of food and stuff, but I got a show.
And you said you can zoom it.
I can, yeah, yeah. Dinner should basically be over by about seven, so I should be able to pop out.
Board ends at six. Well, they're three hours behind, right? So it's six. So it's one with six. I'm doing it from home, so I can just. Hello.
Hello. They're all ready to go. Oh, okay.
Oh, thanks.
Awesome.
Hello.
Hi, thanks. Hello. What's your name?
Hey.
And one copy, better copies.
Good, how are you doing?
These are just latest, I just printed them in so it'll help get really.
My kids got home from school, we had to eat and get the soccer practice. I had to get my kids set up and then. Oh, cool. But they're for tomorrow. I'll check it either tomorrow or tomorrow. I got a bunch of leftover stuff.
Uh, we did have it for tomorrow to a prepress. I mean, y'all feel like we did. We have it on the agenda for tomorrow, the improvements?
Yeah, that's for tomorrow.
We just, we just take it tomorrow. Okay.
That's just so I didn't have to email it to you.
I did, and I was waiting to budget season back and I'll send it out for the June. Yes.
Oh, I thought it was four hours. See what kind of spending that might.
I mean, let's see.
I know that the.
I could send them out ahead of time, but I haven't.
Equipment could be discussed later, but I'd be curious of how these spend that big challenge.
Yeah, I mean, if, when we start the meeting, if that's a question, I could send them out ahead of time. No.
Sorry, we're good. I mean, comparing it to last year ending almost and then December enrolling them six months.
Yeah, but I mean, they should have been running the old and new systems in town anyway. I mean, I, like, what?
Hopefully they went back and reworked it.
I hope so. I mean, you don't, you just don't jump over to a new system in production and go, yeah, we're there. It's frightening.
Well, it's frightening because where's the dad? Because where's the dad is sitting right now?
I don't know. I said they must be putting live dad in the new system, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yes, they will. Well, they sent, they sent it to Chris, I guess.
Well, okay, so I.
He later emailed it.
I do, and I had put it on an agenda item for the June meeting, but if people want it for tomorrow, I can have it tomorrow. I can get it out.
It's gonna make a, a big difference in terms of what we do, yeah, what we.
All right, I'll send it out for tomorrow, the prior document.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, but we could just see him. But I did want to discuss them in June.
Oh, yeah, that's on the agenda, yeah.
But it can impact if we need to make other decisions for tomorrow. It can impact that. Okay. All right, seven o'clock, this is our regular meeting in Canterbury Board Finance Board. We've got Jason, Joy, Mike, last, Jeanette, please to sit as a full member tonight. I'll just check Zoom. Don't see anybody else, so we've got four, so that's good. Let's go pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, in the civil liberty and justice system. My whole time. All right. Make sure I've got the right docs here, so. All right, point of this meeting is the public hearing for the Canterbury budgets. Bring that share up. All right, I think we can see it. All right, and what we're basically looking at is the high top dollar numbers. We do have copies of the detailed CIP town budgets and board of ed budgets if you like a copy. Yep, but what we as a board of finance do is take the budgets as prepared and sent to us and look at the revenue estimates and see if we can basically pay for it and then make some assumptions about mill rate and so forth and collection rates. And we have the grand list numbers and then we plug all that in and see if we can afford it based on where finances stand. So that's the update and that's what we're going to do tonight. Here we go. As usual, our objectives are to provide that information, get feedback from people here. I've got, we may have some, someone in the audience here who would like to speak later. We have a section for that. I also have a letter from, from someone in town that I can also enter into the record. And as part of our ongoing mission to develop a better understanding and ownership of the budget process and as usual, to try to adopt a budget in timely fashion, which has been possible last several years. It was three, four, five years that we, that this ran into the summer and it required multiple votes and that sort of thing. If we can get these things done in a timely fashion and we reduce uncertainty so we can get those bills out on time first of July and reduce the cost of running additional referendum and votes for that. Our focus is to adequately fund local services, to plan for capital expenditures, to set goals and priorities, to facilitate proper spending oversight, meeting legal requirements and maintain a sufficient fund balance, cash flow and to essentially plan for an unpredictable future. The timeline, we are here on April 30th, the public hearing. We will take feedback tonight. We will look at other materials that may come for tomorrow and on May 1st, which is tomorrow, we may act to, to put that to the town. We also have another meeting on the 8th that is an optional meeting if we're not done with our business tomorrow. The town meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 16th, and the referendum is the Tuesday after that. This process is not just these next couple of weeks. The process started for the board of ed back in early.
January.
January, yeah. And then we started seeing those documents late March and April. So it's been a multi-month process of the boards working on their budgets and bringing them to the board of finance. And this is just the culmination of that. Here are the bottom line numbers, the town budget, which is on these docs. If people just came in and want to grab, we've got CIP, town and board of ed docs. The town budget is three million, four hundred sixty one thousand eighty seven dollars. Capital improvement budget, five hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred fifty two dollars and the education budget, well made, nine hundred six thousand nine hundred twenty one dollars. Total expenditure sixteen eight hundred eighty one thousand five hundred sixty dollars. As you can see, the EDU makes up seventy six percent of the town budget. Town is twenty one and CIP is three percent. Here are some year-on-year comparisons. Town government is up five point two eight percent year-on-year. CIP is up thirteen point seven four percent year-on-year. EDU is up two point nine percent overall, up three point six eight percent, which, you know, is not bad given the inflationary area we're in. And we do have some budget drivers on this. The, for the town budget, refuse is up quite a bit. There's contractual increases. There's extended pay DMS staff. There's, and I did make a few local, a few late edits to this to reflect that there's recreation parks and grounds increase. So I put that in here as well and early voting expenses due to the state law supporting early voting. CIP drivers are vehicle leases, BMS blacktop and heating impact systems that are for emergency purposes if stuff goes out over there. But more than half of that increase of sixty, sixty two thousand was thirty five thousand of us moving. You don't have that, but I put it in there as a, as a lead edit. Basically, we took revenue that was on the CIP budget and took it out of that and put it in our regular revenue side. So it increases that budget by thirty five thousand, but it's not new money, but it's a more accurate representation of what the CIP budget is. So more than half of the increase was just clerical changes to the CIP. On the EDU side, there's an added school security officer. There's the last year of items that were previously funded by grant sources being replaced by local funding and just general regular contractual increases. So we have all these expenses and then how do we pay for it? Large vast majority of it is through taxes. So taxes make up sixty seven percent of our revenue, both property tax and interest and liens on the property tax. And then three percent is local revenue, just be permits, dump stickers, that sort of thing. And then twenty nine percent intergovernmental revenue, which are state grants, town aid road, education cost sharing, cap, cap, LOSEF and those types of things that replace our state, state property. Out of our state, out of our state, state funding or intergovernmental funding, ECS is a huge component of it, is eighty eight percent of that. Has a history of reductions, although it's been stable over the last couple of years. So here's what it looks like going back, whatever, eight, six, eight, ten years. Back in fiscal year twenty sixteen, it was four point seven million and our budgets were significantly smaller at that point. So it was a much larger chunk of our budget and it's been reducing. But if you look at fiscal year twenty one, it was four point oh oh four million. Fiscal year twenty twenty two is the same thing. Twenty twenty three is the same thing. Twenty four, there was a committee that proposed a reduction, but the actual final number was four point oh oh four million. So actually, if you look at it, it's been stable now for five years, which we were not expecting when we were going into the, that bottom edge of that curve there. But so far, fingers crossed, ECS is holding steady at four point oh oh four million this year, which, which is almost, almost three, what, how many mil? Three, four mil by itself? Something like that. Or no, ten mil?
Yeah.
Nine mil by itself, yeah. So it's a significant portion of our, of our local, local revenue. Grad list, this is the total property value in town, both real property, cars, personal property, that sort of thing. Grand list change is fairly modest this year. We had a bigger than, than expected grand list change last year for a non-reval year. This year's point six seven percent increase instead of the mill rate. The mill equivalent also goes up by point six seven percent where one mil is equal to four hundred fifty eight thousand, six hundred ninety eight dollars. Revenue estimates for this year, taxes, liens, interest, we're estimating ten million, four hundred eighty four thousand, five hundred sixty two dollars. We're estimating under local revenue, five hundred twenty three thousand, six hundred dollars, and we're estimating under intergovernmental revenue, four million, five hundred thirty three thousand, one hundred one dollars, with a total revenue of fifteen million, five hundred forty one dollars to, or two hundred sixty three dollars. Here's a year-on-year comparison of the revenue sources. Taxes, as you see, our estimates on tax collection, interest and liens is up point six seven percent. So the eagle-eyed mathematician here will tell you that the mill rate, we're expected to keep that flat. So our, our total revenue on that line has gone up by the grand list percentage as well. Local revenue, there's quite a tick there. I think we did some revenue estimate adjustments on permits and fees and interest and these types of things. So to just more, more, more accurately reflect what we think those revenue estimates will be while not overestimating it, putting us at a risk if there's issues with things like the interest rates and so forth going into the fall into next year. So a big bump on the local revenue. Intergovernmental revenue sees a fairly large increase, although I would say that because we underestimated it because the ECS change last year is probably closer to flat this year. But still, that can be, that's, that's a net positive as well. So our total revenue is up three hundred thousand or almost two percent. The vast majority of our taxes, interest and liens is property tax. We only estimate a small portion in interest and liens, but there is some of it. Vast majority is that. So what we do is we take the amount of tax that we would like to collect, ten million, four hundred forty four thousand, five hundred sixty two. We have a grand list and we do some math on that, which is to say the exact, the desired collection amount divided by the grand list, divided by the collection rate, we use a ninety nine percent collection rate, so that we expect that ninety nine percent of people who have property tax due will pay that. And we end up with a mill rate of twenty three. Now, the math works forwards, but we started backwards. We started by saying, we're gonna keep that mill rate the same and what will our revenue look like and can we work within that? But we actually do not vote on a mill rate tonight. We don't vote on a mill rate tomorrow. This, the town does not vote on a mill rate. The town votes on budgets and budgets allow us to keep the mill rate at twenty three based on our assumptions, right? Based on revenue assumptions and the things that we've looked at so far. So you may ask or you may have seen that the expenses exceed the revenue to the deficit of one point three four million. And what we're able to do is use our fairly healthy unassigned fund balance to offset potential mill rate increases. We've been, we've been, I think, lucky. We've had some good financial management from the interest side with town monies that are, that are investment income. We've had higher, we've had returns from different budgets from prior years. We've had over collection of property tax where the tax collector goes back into overdue taxes and collects that and she really does try, she doesn't give up easily on that. So what we are able to do is we are able to take some of our unassigned fund balance and use that to essentially discount the bill by using that money to pay that down and use it against revenue to cover those expenses. And we, we leave cash flow, we leave ten percent of of the, of the expense side for cash flow. And here is the, here are the sort of bottom line. We've got approved from last year and proposed this year. It's a little small, but you can see the figures that go into it. The town budget here, the capital budget here, the education budget here. Total expenditures, total revenues, this is all based on our assumptions. This is the deficit, the one point three four million. Then we have an unassigned fund balance, which comes from the auditors that we've gotten, three point eight seven nine million. We have some additional appropriations, which were school security grants that are gonna be refunded or grant funded back at sixty percent, something, some significant amount. But we're taking that out of here, which leaves us with three point three million. We take out ten percent for operating expenditures off of the adopted budget and then we subtract the amount that we are deducting to discount the mill and we're left with three hundred twenty nine thousand above ten percent. So at this point, we're seeing growth on our, on our above ten percent reserve for cash flow reasons. And I think this is the last slide, so the, at this point, the board believes that the, the budgets can be covered with the revenue sources that we have at twenty three, at twenty three mil zero mil. I will go on to public comment and I do have a letter that I'll read after the people here have said their words. Anyway, and if the board want to join in with public comment, they can do that as well.
Hi.
Hold on one second, Jeanette. Is there anyone out here who wants to?
I'm speaking as public comment, so I'm not speaking as board.
All right, just gonna privilege the folks here first if they, if anyone here had anything. Okay, but yeah, go ahead.
Okay, my comment would be is what I've said at other meetings too, that I think the increases that both budgets are reflecting, especially over the past couple of years are, for me, are too high. And I'd like the board to really be conscious of reining that in as we move forward in time.
Anyone else? All right, I do have a letter here, an email that I received late this afternoon from June Donovan. To whom it may concern, I am unable to attend the Canterbury town hearing this evening, but wanted to make sure that I was able to make a public comment. As a taxpayer, I support the DOS, BOE and CIP budgets that's currently presented. These budgets help support community needs such as increasing the Recreation Commission funding for more field space, as well as adding a school security officer, which are both going to support kids in our community and are a top priority for families. I appreciate all the hard work of our boards and commissions in town for their fiscal responsibility and effort to improve and support our growing community. Respectfully, June Donovan of three thirty two Lisbon Road, and I can get you this, Joy, for the minutes. Let me check Zoom chat. Not seeing any. Final call for public comment.
How much is our fund balance? Since we have a healthy one.
So it's on this, it's, you may have to step closer. You can look at the back screen. But this, this three point eight seven nine, three point eight seven nine eight six six.
Okay.
That's our unassigned fund balance, meaning monies that we have being held by the town that aren't earmarked for. Unencumbered monies, yes. So, but it could be that we have retiree things or healthcare things or something like that, or even money being held for CIP purposes and these types of things. So three point eight seven nine eight six six, which is a number we get from the auditors, which is trailing a year. So what will happen is when this budget is all done and all, you know, a full year from now, everything's the past, they will do an audit of the town's finances and they will square up all the pennies and cents and dollars and then they will tell us what the new fund balance is that we could use for budgeting next year. So we have at our disposal three point eight seven nine million. We carve out, we essentially go ahead and take out this additional appropriation. We're gonna, because it's not in that audited amount, because the audited amount is a trailing year. This additional appropriation was during the, the current year we're in, twenty three, twenty four. So we subtract it out. We get an unreserved projected of three point three. And then we pull out again ten percent of the sixteen point eight eight. And we do that for maintain cash flow purposes if there's, if there's issue.
To your point, our balance after the proposed budget as it sits at this moment in time, will be three hundred and, I can't read it, three twenty nine remaining.
Three twenty nine remaining above the ten percent.
Right. But we also anticipate some money coming in. We have a grant that the school has been running and the recap on the grant will be over two hundred thousand, which will automatically go in. We have some special ed money, which will automatically go in to bump, keep bumping up our leftover after this budget runs.
Thank you. Thanks, David. Just one.
Yep, yep.
Bob DeLuca, four twenty eighth North Canterbury Road. I'm also on the direct commission. I just wanted to speak to that budget increase. Echo the, the, the letter you just read. So we, last year's budget, I think, was twenty thousand. We've increased it by ten thousand to thirty thousand this year. And the reason is we, during COVID, numbers were down pretty low with the use of the fields and kids and all the programs. That, that's going up quite a bit lately. Um, we've also found ourselves, we have a traffic issue down at Manship Park. Kind of dangerous. The field's gotten worn out. In the meantime, we've always had Blackwell Field as an option. It's, it's, it's laid fallow for several years now, so the idea was that the direct commission was gonna use their pre-money to get it back up and running, spent five to ten thousand dollars. But then the additional ten thousand dollars would be what would need to be, to maintain that field ongoing. So we think it's a worthwhile solution. It, it was, we were, we're working out the details with now who leases that field. There was some confusion with that when that lease was signed. Now have, when it was initially signed, Canterbury had no real rights to use it. Now had first position to use it, so a new lease is being signed with Canterbury to have first position. Now we have second position, so. And that, that should happen any, any day now. And then once that's in place, Canterbury will have, you know, complete use of that field. And we think it's a worthwhile investment. We have used it in the past portions of it, but like I said, COVID really brought numbers down. Now they seem to be coming way back up and if you ever been down Manship Park during, after school, it's, it's, it's a mess. There's just too much happening down there. There's not enough parking.
You went, question on that. You went up ten thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay, and you have PRE money of fifteen grand.
Correct.
So you're saying actually you needed twenty five grand more to.
No, no, PRE.
Hold on a second. Let me finish my phone, but, okay. You're saying that you need twenty five more because you're using the fifteen and the ten to upgrade Warrigan Road.
Blackwell Field, right.
And then also you need more money to upgrade Manship because you're, you're falling down, so you're using PRE money for that as well?
We're not using PRE. We, we use PRE money for capital improvement.
Right. You just said the field was taking a beating.
Correct, because of overuse.
Right.
CIA just paid two thousand dollars to receive Manship.
That's not in our budget, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, um, the budget money is for making it, for mowing the fields, fertilizing and things like that.
So one field adds ten thousand dollars more to mowing a field?
You have, you have three Campbell Frank Manship.
Right.
That's twenty thousand dollars.
So you're adding one more.
Correct. And that adds ten thousand dollars. Does that not make sense to you?
Well, I just feel like it's a lot. Ten thousand dollars to, to mow a field for the summer.
Well, there's more than mowing the field.
What, what's more to it then?
It's fertilizing, there's, there's. It's fertilizing, there's, is, the spring cleanup, there's. PRE money was specifically for capital improvement.
Right.
That's why it was great.
So it's to upgrade the facilities that we have as capital improvement. So if you're seeding, you're upgrading a facility.
For example, we ran short with money when we were doing the tennis court and the basketball court, and we kicked in some PRE money for that. It might have been some equipment that was added to the field that the PR money, PRE money was used. The, the, the town budget money is, is used for maintenance, uh, to use for keeping up the field.
I would think anything that's a recurring thing would not be a capital expenditure. And do you seed periodically?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything over 10,000 could be a PRE, could be a capital improvement? I'm just clarifying as to what they are doing.
I'll just be clear. I mean, I can tell you, we, we use the, the PRE money. It's not sitting, it's not just sitting in a, in a account. I mean, we've, we've been constantly adding things that.
Zeroed it out when you did the courts, right?
I'm sorry.
You zeroed out, then people bless you.
Correct, we did at the time, we did. And we, we used to seed grant, and the town kicked in some money and, and we used PRE.
We all remember that. Thank you for clarifying.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else on the board? Great. See, no further public comment. We do have a regular meeting tomorrow to act on this, just to act on this, to send it to town meeting. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Jeanette, do me a second. Joy, motion is to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jeanette, do you first?
Eight twenty-five.
I'm sorry, yes. Why go eight twenty-five?